If I can have your attention, we'll get started. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of May 1st, 2019 to order. What is this year, anyway? Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, after the pledge, let Sandy say a few words about the kids.
Sure.
We'd like to invite our two students up. Sandy, would you like to introduce them now?
Of course. Of course. We have, before you, you have Joseph and Autumn Bray, who are extremely talented seventh graders. They're not only talented in terms of their academic abilities, but they're also talented socially, and they're also talented musically. Joey plays bassoon, and he was elected into the New Hampshire Honors Band this year. And Autumn plays the clarinet, and she's a fantastic clarinet player in our band. So, I'll leave it there. Also, Mr. and Mrs. Bray can also...
Great. You can lead us, come on up, and you can lead us in the pledge.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. You can come right up here.
Is he older?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell.
All right, go ahead.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all...
Thank you, Joseph. Thank you. It's very nice to meet you, too. Keep it up with your instruments.
And we have minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion, changes, alterations. Okay, all in favor? I think that's unanimous, Phyllis. Manifest has worked its way around, and I think it's back at Phyllis now. And we have some nominations.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Godfrey as Special Education Case Manager at the Bakers School, Brenda Gudrow as a Math Interventionist at the high school, and Abigail Presby as an English teacher at the high school.
Motion?
Pro movement.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Minutes.
I'd like to accept, oh, we're on resignations, sorry.
Okay, we have some resignations.
We do. Just wanted to thank Christine Nolan for her tremendous service to our district as a middle school guidance counselor. She is retiring. And Lauren Petradus, an English teacher at the high school, is not coming back next year.
Motion to accept the resignations?
Pro movement.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Are they here yet, Mr. Stack?
Uh, no, Ms. Sally is in traffic.
That's okay, no problem. We've got a couple of young people coming, and I wanted to get them in here so that they don't have to put out with it. So when they come, let me know, and we'll go from there.
Superintendent's report. I just wanted to take a moment to do a brief update and let the public know that the administrative team has worked very hard and collaboratively to answer over 400 questions about the potential school reorganization. And those questions have been presented to the community in an FAQ document. It's approximately 45 pages long. But I do want everyone to know that there is a cover letter or a beginning to the document that really summarizes the core concerns and questions and kind of gives someone an opportunity to understand the gist of everything without reading all 440 questions. But you're certainly welcome to do that, and that is right on our website. I've shared it on Facebook, and we'll be sending it out on Constant Contact and in school newsletters later this week. I'm gonna skip that.
Huh?
I think we're gonna skip that, right? Because of the...
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yep, there was one other thing...
As some of you know, I haven't read some things that...
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to mention to you, and I guess I'll just say this, that so that the public is aware, Pete and I had a discussion about putting school board goals on this meeting's agenda, and we felt that we should wait until there's a decision made about the reconfiguration of the district. And the hope is that that decision will be made in a few weeks, so, you know, mid-June, and then have a conversation about goals, because if the district is reorganizing, I would certainly recommend that that would be our goal. That's a big, big, big goal. So I think that for now, we should just kind of hold still, and that's what I'm recommending. But if anyone disagrees or would like it put on the next agenda, please feel free to call the office, and I'll talk to Pete about that next Wednesday or Thursday.
You have something? You seem to be standing next to something, like you want to give a report about that barrel.
No, they're the folks that are doing the presentation with the students.
Okay, all right, fine. I...
All right, I was trying to stay off to the side.
No, 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 you know what it is? When we have students and things here, I like to get them in and out, because the last thing they want to know is, well, what about the changes to these policies? Or, yeah, sure, why don't we go by the...
Well, you like to... I like, I like.
Well, you're staying anyway. No, you know what I mean. I mean, it's, you know. So, anyway, okay. Policy, I believe you said, yes, I think...
Yeah, policy met on Monday, the 29th, and Board members Brown, Heath, and Broderick attended, along with Superintendent Ambrose Remotley, Assistant Principal Dawson, who's done a lot of work helping us to revise our manual, and Director of Academics, Dr. Haynes, attended. Per the Board's request, the committee reviewed policies related to public participation at Board meetings and agenda preparation. That's BEDB and BEDA, as well as the Code of Ethics, BCA. The committee recommends no major revisions to these policies at this time, though one change to BEDB will be motioned at the next Board meeting. Our current policy, BEDB, states the Board reserves the right to limit public discussion of Board meetings to agenda items only. And policy, BCA, states employees defined to include school board members shall not use school district work hours, including Board meetings, to campaign for any candidates for political office. So the committee suggests that the Board chair consider reminding meeting attendees of these rules, particularly at meetings occurring just prior to school district elections. And Board members are also reminded that they may state point of order at any time during a meeting if the proceedings are believed to deviate from Board policies. We did look at three policies referred back to the subcommittee, DFA, DFF, and ECE, and discuss those, and will return those to the Board at its next meeting. Mr. Fitzpatrick sent us comments on some of these policies from several sections of the manual, and some of his suggestions will be discussed tonight, and the rest will be reviewed at the next Board meeting on May 15th. Regulations governing federal grant money now require a new set of policies. A new policy, DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, was discussed. DAF is more than 20 pages long and includes 10 subsections. DAF, of course it does, it's a federal policy. DAF through DAF-10. The full draft will be forwarded to Board members shortly. Hopefully, I'll get it to you tomorrow with a motion to approve at our next Board meeting, hopefully. The DAF language is set by federal law and guidelines and cannot be redrafted or changed by our Board. So just keep that in mind when you review those policies. DJ and DJB will also require revision to add references to DAF. Finally, we reviewed changes to additional J policies recommended by the New Hampshire School Board Association and supported by our district administrators. We have two new policies, and I'll list these within the minutes. And then we agreed those revisions when we reviewed it at our meeting are ready for the next meeting on May 15th, and we adjourned at 2:45.
And we have a meeting Monday?
We have a meeting on Monday from 12 to 1:30 in the SAU office.
I'd like to revisit the question of committees meeting during the workday, when it's really impractical for other Board members who work, at least, and the members of the public to attend those meetings, and I'd like to question why. I don't think that's a good practice. I'd like to question why we're doing it, and I'd like to suggest that it's not a good practice. And I'd like to see what needs to happen for us to have a discussion about that.
We didn't really give it much thought, and I don't mean to throw you under the bus, but Pam had some time or strings. Larry and I have both retired, so we don't really care. And I think this fall...
We're planning to shift it to an afternoon, since all the subcommittees are meeting at 4:30 on Wednesdays. We're trying to decide what day of the week in the early evening we'll be meeting. I agree with you, it's not acceptable that we continue meeting during the day. So we're trying to figure out a date to meet.
Do you know when you're going to be doing that? You've already had one meeting. I would have liked to have attended that, because I was the one who motioned the public comment policy discussion. I wasn't able to attend that.
Larry's looking at me, I'm looking at him. We're lucky, we don't care. I mean...
That's fine. I suggested the fourth Wednesday of the month at 4:30, but I believe Mr. Heath cannot attend that day, so we're still trying to discover a date that's compatible with everyone.
It'll just be the first Wednesday of the month, as it's always been, at 4:30. That's what we'll do.
No, because it conflicts with facilities, so...
Are you on facilities? Yes, I am. Okay, then I'll, as I said at the last Board meeting, I'll be working on a schedule and get it out to everyone.
My concern with policies is if we have it Wednesday for a school board meeting, it's like this policy. It was supposed to go to 1:15. It was almost 2:15 by the time we got out.
2:45.
Yeah, so my concern is if we jam ourselves up on school board meeting nights, all of a sudden, it's time we've got to come here.
We may want to try Thursday nights.
I don't really care.
I want to throw it there that I would like to pause this conversation, because it's not an agenda topic.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine. We'll work it out.
It is not.
So that's my question, do we need to make it an agenda item? We did discuss it.
Sure, we can put that on the next one. Sure, you know. Hopefully by then, we'll have an answer.
I will find a date for us to work on, for everyone, in the evening.
Lisa?
Yes, the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met on April 10th. In attendance, myself, Mrs. Alessio, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Superintendent Ambrose, Interim Director of Academics, Professional Learning and Student Affairs, Ms. Haynes, Assistant Principal Dawson, and Director of Guidance, Ms. Levitt. I was appointed to continue as Chair by unanimous vote. Mrs. Levitt reported on the progress of the Early College Program, which, just to review, is the program that we, Sandborne, is going to be working with Northern Essex Community College. They have a program for high school students to attend. It's a little bit different than the dual enrollment classes that we have traditionally offered, where the students attend those here during the, you know, their normal class day. They act, the students are actually going to be taking their classes. They are enrolling for a, enrolling in a program of studies, a specific program of studies, and they'll be attending the campus. They'll take the classes on the campus specifically. She reported that 17 students have taken the Accuplacer test, which is a test that Northern Essex offers to, it's a placement test to be approved into the program. So that was very encouraging, that 17 students were entrusted in the first year that we're offering this. Sandborne was awarded a $20,250 grant to help offset the tuition costs and maximize participation, particularly among first-generation college students. Student success benchmarks were also discussed. It is projected that over 90% of this year's graduates will meet the district's criteria for student success. The number of students taking the ASVAB and participating in ELOs and internships have also increased from last year. The ELO program was discussed in further detail. Students present their experiences at the end of the year, and our committee members were encouraged to attend if possible. Mrs. Alessio suggested also inviting members of the press to those presentations. Another possibility we discussed was to have one or two students present to the Board, to make their presentations to the Board, possibly at one of our June meetings. New Hampshire Department of Education Commissioner Ettleblu will be visiting here on May 3rd to learn more about the program and to explore possibilities for implementation in other districts. And as a way of beginning the process of strategic planning, Ms. Haynes will be presenting at our next committee meeting, work that the district will be undertaking to establish a profile of a graduate. That meeting will be next when, excuse me, two weeks from today, May 15th, at 4:30. Yes?
Okay.
One question on that. Didn't we also discuss, or were we not gonna have in the next meeting, a discussion about the shake...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, yes, actually, yes, that's true. We also have, yes, sorry.
I think it's important to note, that agenda hasn't been set yet, and the timeline that Patty needs at the next agenda is long.
Okay.
So we might have to do it at the next meeting, or we might include it in another presentation. So I don't want to say publicly that that's definitely happening. We need to develop the agenda for the next meeting, but that is something that's on a future agenda.
Yeah, okay, because I want to make sure that didn't get slipped.
No, 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 it's not. It's in the hopper, so to speak.
Yeah, okay. How about you on the finance?
Well, I have a report on finance, facilities is the next item.
Oh, I thought you put a no on that one, sorry.
Yeah, it's just, but it's meeting, it's, right now, it's scheduled for June 5th, the next meeting. But that could change, apparently. Finance met on April 17th. The committee members present were Jamie Fitzpatrick, Jim Baker, plus Matt Angel and Corey Philbrook from the auditing firm Vaishan Clouquet and Company. The first order of business was to elect the committee chair for this term. Matt Angel presided, Jamie Fitzpatrick nominated, Jim Baker, Baker accepted, and the vote was unanimous. The minutes for our March 13th meeting were reviewed and approved, and Corey Philbrook from Vaishan Clouquet reported the results of the district's annual financial audit. That was for fiscal year ending 2018. And the audit is an annual independent financial review that is done to assure the district is in compliance with generally accepted accounting practices and financial requirements. The audit report was completed in January. Mr. Philbrook is scheduled to report the details at the June 5th school board meeting. We reviewed a breakdown of adjustments to the revolving fund. The fund balances are in the process of being updated. We discussed the school lunch program. There's outstanding balances, and there's work being done to bring the balances current. We reviewed the March 2019 budget reports. The expenditures for health and dental were $390,974.98. And expenditures from the general fund excluding health and dental were $2,508,731.31. We reviewed the authority of the finance committee to approve line item budget transfers of up to $10,000, and we decided to request no change to that amount. The finance committee meeting, the next meeting is scheduled for May 8th at 4:30 PM.
We discuss anything about that? Okay. Personnel?
We have a short meeting on May 22nd at 5:00 PM in the SAU office. 5:00 PM, thank you.
What is on the agenda for that meeting, Pam?
Just a meet and greet.
Election of officers, I would think.
Mr. Fitzpatrick and I are on this committee.
Okay.
I'll bring the BDE-E, summary of the committee's duties.
Okay.
Review those.
All right, I just wasn't sure if there was a topic.
Yeah, no.
Larry?
Budget.
Budget thing, what's going on?
Okay, Budget Committee, we had a meeting on April 11th at 7:00 PM right here in the library. And the meeting was called to order by our clerk, Phyllis. Pledge of Allegiance was done, and minutes for February 4th was approved. The budget calendar was, we had the election of officers, let's start there. The chairman for this year will be Annie Collier, and the vice chair will be Maura Bashel. As you know, Maura is a brand-new person, so what the Budget Committee was thinking is that this way, we can get experience built in with our new people. And we were proceeding on that agenda. We reviewed and approved the budget calendar for the upcoming year. It will be reviewed with the superintendent and the business manager. And we also established a sub-community, a subcommittee, I'm sorry, for the review of the guidelines for the Budget Committee. Our next meeting is October 10th, 2019, at 7:00 PM here in the library. We may have one sooner, we're waiting on dates. That's all.
Thank you. We're all set. Okay, could I have a motion to move 8.2 to now?
Move, motion, move to move, move to move. Agenda item 8.2 up in the agenda to right now.
That's the extending learning opportunity.
Second.
And the internship... Second?
I did.
All right, discussion? All in favor? Brian, you're up.
All right, this is a part one of two parts. So tonight, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about some of our extended learning opportunity projects. Hopefully, at a future meeting, when we can schedule it, we're gonna talk to you about the internship side of it. So, as you know, extended learning opportunities are not something new at Sandborne. We've been doing them for quite some time. However, they've started to garner quite a bit of support around the state, and actually, our commissioner, Commissioner Ettleblu, is working on an initiative right now called Learn Everywhere, which is a way to sort of scale up the ELO, Extended Learning Opportunity model, that some schools like Sandborne and Winnicott and others have, so that it could be done in a lot of different schools around the state. So what I'm really excited to talk to you or to share with you tonight are some of our educators and one of our students to talk a little bit about some of our projects and what that looks like. So just to kind of frame it for you, know that we really do believe here at Sandborne that the best kind of learning takes place when our students are passionate and they're engaged in something because it's something meaningful to them that they want to explore and learn more about. So this idea starts at our elementary and our middle school level, when kids have choice and voice in working on some of the different projects that they work on. And it really starts to explode in the sophomore year here at Sandborne, when one of our requirements as part of being a sophomore is to take a course called SIP, which stands for Student Interest Period. And during that course, which is actually run over the course of the year, and it's part of the sophomore team experience that the kids have, the kids will actually pick two different topics that they can research and act on. So I say "act on" because their projects could be anything. It could be doing a piece of artwork, it could be researching something, it could be developing a piece of music, it could be any host of things. So they start to learn more about the research side of what they're doing, as well as the practical side. The teachers in the sophomore team act as a guide, helping students and steering students to different resources, and helping to connect them with others who are experts in the area. Once they leave that sophomore year, then they could, they have that opportunity to pursue what we call extended learning opportunities in the junior and the senior year. So tonight, you're gonna get to hear about some really incredible examples. So I'm just gonna introduce the people and say a couple things about them, because they're all modest and won't say much about themselves. So this way, I'll do that for them, and then you'll get to hear some great things from them. So we have tonight three people. In no particular order, we have Keri Alley. Keri Alley is our Career Pathways Coordinator at Sandborne. So she oversees all of our internships and extended learning opportunities that students do. She is out in the community, making connections with businesses. So when you see on Facebook that this particular business would love to find a way to get into the school to do X, usually she gets tagged in that post, and she's out there the next day talking to them to figure out how we can develop what we call a mutually beneficial relationship. There's gotta be something in it for both sides. And she, I'm sure, will tell you a little bit about some of the things that they do. She's a fantastic Energizer Bunny educator. It helps that she lives right here in our community, so she's able to get to know people really well, and I feed her a lot of information from 30 years of living in this community and knowing a lot of different players here, there, and everywhere. I'll feed her a lot of business cards and say, I had a chat with this person, they're ready to do something, go get them and see what we can get, and she does that. Jonathan Lee is one of our students here who was able to make it tonight. Some of the other students with projects had sports conflicts and other things that ran late, but Jonathan Lee joined us late this year from halfway across the world, and I will, I'm sure he'll tell you a little bit about that, but he's very excited to be here. I just shared with Mr. Ambrose, Ms. Kennedy, an article that he wrote recently that I asked that they forward on to you, so you can learn a little bit about his experience here from his eyes, as he shares that experience. Mr. Enright, Jim Enright, is a special education teacher here at Sandborne, and he decided to do an experiment this year, basically as a volunteer during his planning period, as a result of the fact that he was a recipient of some funds from the Sandborne Seminary trustees. And so he had this crazy idea to have an entire course dedicated to student interest projects for upperclassmen, where students could actually pick a project and see it all the way through. And what I will tell you is really neat about him stepping forward to do this, is that as an educator, it's very risky to be willing to step up to the plate and say, I know I'm not gonna be an expert in what these kids might want to study, but I'm willing to go in there and learn with them. And that takes a really special kind of person. I think you'll see that come through when Jim talks to you a little bit tonight. So, without further ado, I will let Mr. Enright.
I know your technology is, I would have talked over that you were gonna set it up so we could...
There we go. Okay, so this, how do I link it up with that? Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. Mr. Stack told me I had to keep it under an hour, so I'm gonna shoot. So I'm gonna shoot for that.
Okay.
See what happens.
Is that it?
It is, it is. The speakers are here. There are, I will say that this was put together sort of by me. I'm not a technical person, so, no, thank you. So I did the best that I could in terms of getting some interviews and speaking with some of the students. It is right here, there is a moment where the volume sort of jumps up a bit, and so I apologize, I'll try and catch that as it happens, so that we don't blow out anyone's This video, it's about five minutes or something, five and a half minutes, so...
Okay, I have to be a patient. I agree with you. And so together, this year, we're getting off the tide, which is pretty much making use of the main... Well, pretty much the fish waste, because I don't have clear water, which is brought down to the plants. And the plants who said that, you know... And the plants use that water to, you know, grow, for the lines and the plants. And that's what, it releases the water back to the fish. And these are fish, they don't have a stitch.
What is that? It's rubber. When I look at this, I think to myself, my first need is to prove, so that I can take that into consideration. I'll talk to myself like, what if I can take this, and do a little, something like this? This is by a little robot, it's not like a robot, a little... So originally, this was a little sound sensor receiver that was set in place, which originally used to be like, really big, because it had the final record on top. So then, I checked through to make sure this was like, thin enough and saturated into this little frame here. And then, which Fungai really does. And then, over here, I took the speakers that were originally from its player system and cleaned out, added to blocks, and just put it on in here. And also, best part is, that's... So what happens is, upon this factory, which is full of lots, you should see usually how like, sticking wires in here to like, sound. But what I did is, I soldered back these, which is the same connection, just by this little wire right here. And also, the wires were there like, too long, I stick. And then, after that, I was putting these, our speakers, to make sure that it was going to be like, you know, some wires, because I was making it sound better.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Lee, and I am an exchange student from Asia. And behind me is a project that I have been working on since January. It is a system that needs to convert plastics into oil view, which is one of its original state. Yeah? There is a few who have loaded, very low, the plastics into it. This is collected, which will keep the system from semi-aging in substance. The use of plastic is still into a condensing field. And this is the first sample that we've collected from our trial experiments. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maddie Galway, and I'm doing ELO, and my ELO is on childhood cancer. And I wrote a book explaining, like, with the child's body to explain it. And this like ties in with my paternity, sensitive habits, and my classroom passions. It's childhood cancer, and I think I'm going to teach everyone.
One of the things that didn't quite come across in the color of the book, for example, Maddie's book, she did a remarkable job with that book. And obviously, she mentioned in terms of what is the purpose of the book. I wanted to just talk for a couple of minutes. I want to have everyone be able to see some of the cool projects and that you've seen up there and the students that were talking about them. But there are a couple of things, a couple of points that I kind of wanted to make about it, is that the projects are all different. And the projects aren't my projects. They aren't my ideas. They're ideas that we sort of brainstorm and come up with. And I might say, "Hey, well, what about this? You're interested in environmental, so, you know, environmental science, so what about this idea?" Or something in this realm. And it's all student-driven, because that's where they really get the benefit or where the learning experience takes place. So, for example, Luke, the student that's doing the crystals and the fungus, and he's developing a fungus that will be a natural pesticide. And he could talk to me about the enzymes and the exfoliant skeletons and everything else. And I'm totally lost, because I can't help him with that. I don't know about that. And, science, former science teacher, do you know a lot about growing fungus and culturing fungus and everything? I won't think that's fun.
No, but they're very happy guys, because they're fun guys.
They are. He's just my joke.
Any science teacher uses that one.
How many times have I used that joke? Dozens at least. And so, but it's the research. And it's not, I will tell you, I get emails at 10 o'clock at night on a Friday night. I get emails over the weekends. The students that were working on the electric car emailed me all summer long because they're interested, they're fun. It's learning that is driven by them, it's engaging for them, and they want to do well with it. They want to succeed. The other thing is that, we were talking about, how do you measure success of this kind of a product or this kind of program? Is ultimately the product the goal? It isn't the goal, you know, it's all the steps along the way. So, for example, if the students who had made the hydroponics tank, when they first started out, we had a couple of fish in there. And then one day, one of the fish was sadly floating on the top. And so we couldn't figure out why. And then one morning, we were in there and we were fiddling around with some of the pumps. And all of a sudden, we saw the fish get sucked into the pump. So we turned up the motor off, unplugged it, and said, "Okay, this is a problem. We've got to figure out what's going on." And so we realized it was getting pulled in, and that was what happened with the first fish. No, I must have a microphone or something over here. All of a sudden, I'm a lot louder, I'm like, whoa. And so what they did was, they took one of the baskets that the plants are planted in, they put it with a hose clamp over it, problem solved. So they're experiencing real-world problem solving, something that's more difficult to quantify in a traditional learning environment. The other thing are some of the relationships. So Jonathan Lee has been working on this project to melt plastics in order to extract the oil, because all the plastic bottles and things are petroleum-based. And in doing so, you know, might at first blush say, "Whoa, wait a minute. You're not supposed to melt plastics, it's harmful." So we got in touch with a chemical engineer, professor of chemical engineering at UNH. And he came and worked with us on the initial design. Jonathan had several drawings, which we over email, you know, discussed with the professor, Dr. Yee, and finally ended up saying, "Okay, this is what we're going to do." And we built it in the shop. So there's lots of other students involved. They're welding it, they're helping grind the metal down to prepare it for welding, they're painting it, whatever. And then Dr. Yee came, and we had our propane tank, fire extinguisher, safety gloves, and...
Certificate of Insurance, everything.
Everything, all covered. And Dr. Yee was here when we actually, you know, melted the plastics, and we were able to extract the sample. And Jonathan Lee will tell you a little bit more about that. But it goes beyond that. So as part of him coming down to visit and work on the project, he actually, he gave a career speaker presentation. And there were about 20 students, three of whom are going to be going to UNH for engineering in the fall. Two of them were in that video. So Nick, the one that talked about the electric car, he's going to be going there for chemical engineering. And he was able to develop a great rapport with Dr. Yee. Luke, who was doing, the fungi, is going to be doing biochemical engineering. And he threw connections with Dr. Yee. Which started in the fall, but he already has an internship for the summer, so he's going to get experience in the lab. And then another student, who is going to be doing chemical engineering, attended that career speaker presentation. And he also will be working in Dr. Yee's lab, in fact, in the end of the summer at UNH. So I also had the opportunity to go up last week during an undergraduate research conference. And so I got a tour, Dr. Yee took me on a tour of the facility. It's great, it's very exciting. They're developing these sorts of relationships, and it's taking it a little bit further. So, I don't want to talk too much. I would love for you to be able to get up and stretch, if no one minds, walking around a little bit, and I can show you about a couple of projects. Takes like eight minutes in total?
Great.
That work?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Want to present?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're far enough back. Ryan, Ryan. Can you just step aside a little bit, we're afraid it's going to blow up. There's no propane tank.
No, no, I'm just kidding. You get a bunsen burner, just to kind of, or a little, what do they call that, for campfires?
Yeah, right, exactly. While they're loading that, though, like, it was really great to have that connection with UNH, right?
Yeah, it's awesome.
But the nice thing is, this is an easy sell to people. It doesn't take us much to sell to connect people to come in here and work with our kids, especially at this age, because they love doing it. For them, it's like a service project, for them to come in and give back to something, and the kids just eat it up. I mean, they absolutely eat it up. And Jim, he was so worried, it was like, a month, maybe a month is in his school year. And he comes running up to me, he's like, "Brian, I'm so sorry." "What?" "Well, you're going to hear about all my kids doing bad things in this class." I'm like, "What am I going to hear?" Well, apparently, they've started, some of them have started lying to their teachers to say that they were done their work. And I said it was okay for them to go down to the shop and keep working on their project. And I'm going after them, so they can't do that, so, but... To his credit, we excited.
I get emails at 10 o'clock at night on Friday nights in the summer.
So to his credit, though, he's got like seven or eight kids doing this experiment, class, planning period, right? So we actually ran it in the Program of Studies this year as a course offering. We had like 50 kids sign up. So the real challenge next year is going to be to scale this up, right? And find a way that we can still provide that personalization and space for the kids to be able to work and resources on a larger scale. So they think they have a plan, and we're all going to work together, and we're going to figure it out, because it's the right thing to do. And this is the kind of stuff that cites the kids, you know? So I'm killing time while I'm waiting for this, to switch the technology over. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was going to ask you, Kerry, if you could talk about what we're doing too.
If I could just explain a little bit of what ELOs are? Because not many, you know, understand there are four components to an ELO. There's the research component, every question component, a project, and a presentation. So all our students that do ELOs, there's four components. Those are their competencies. And then, they all come up with their own goals. Those also become their competencies of what they're going to reach. So they personalize each of their situations for themselves. Adam, actually, over here, has done an ELO with his drama as...
Oh, okay, thank you so much.
The direction or the result, stage managing, and some of the problems. And then he also is doing an internship at True Form Manufacturing. But we're going to talk about internships in the June meeting, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So...
Sorry, because you limited us to five minutes.
That's fine, too.
So we broke the rule, we just, we got around the rule.
ELOs come, internships are a form of an ELO. So ELOs come in lots of shapes and sizes. And like, we can do it outside of the classroom, we do some inside of the classroom. We have students that go and do certifications for dental hygiene or for LNA. And those are all ELOs. We have three students that want to do LNA this summer and get that certification done, get high school credit for it, and be, you know, now they can go work. So it really takes on lots of different forms. Maddie, who wrote the children's book, she wants to do a series of different childhood diseases that explains Lucy's adventure through each of those, so we could house those in our elementary libraries. So that just explains, the one that she was talking to me about lately was anxiety. You know, childhood anxiety and how to cope with that. And so it's just really crappy, creative. And it's, the students are in the driver's seat. They're the ones that are coming up with the ideas. We're just the facilitators, we're just the mentors, we're just trying to help them find all of those avenues. And once they have that passion, as Jim said, they go. When I got here five years ago, we had 18 interns and a few ELOs. And now we're at 100 of them. So it's just amazing how much we give kids ownership, how much that they can grow from that.
The number of community partners is expanding every year.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that in June, too, by the way.
In June, but it's great.
A piece of the ELO is our career speaker program, too, that we do. So we provide career speakers every six days, once every six days. And we have over 100 community speaker, career speakers that come in every year. So just the community outreach is amazing.
I think the thing that I just wanted to mention, if you don't mind, she said the depth of ELOs, to me, was, where I came from, ELOs were more kind of like projects.
Right.
Never had I seen any of them on this scale. But the part I didn't realize was that ELOs were also intellectual projects. So sometimes students would say, "I would like to study this topic" and go deep and get feedback from professionals in the field and work with others. And that's the part that really surprised me was the, there's a physical application to some ELOs. There's an experiential learning component to some ELOs, like being in LNA. But there's also some really academic work, like students studied Auschwitz and went.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And wrote that all up, and like, actually, I mean, that ELO was in a different way.
We have some good ones coming, too.
Yeah, this is also deep, though, I don't want to, I don't want, it's just a different type of deep.
So our students that do travel, we just had a group that went to Costa Rica, a group that went to Poland. They have the opportunity to earn ELO credit for that. So they have to do those four components. We have, I believe, out of the Poland trip, we had eight that have decided to do, to get their quarter credit for their ELO experience. And Costa Rica, I just had two or three girls come and talk to me about that. So those presentations all will happen on May 29th. And you'll all get invitations, so you'll be able to come and choose which ones you would like to go and watch. But it's a great afternoon, lots of things going on.
What percentage of the classes are in this?
Four.
For just the ELO?
ELOs.
For some total students involved?
Well, total students involved, we have about 100 students.
Not a 600.
Yeah, yes. I think we're around 100.
Remember, this is mostly juniors and seniors.
Yes, yes.
And this comes about because we start with every sophomore.
Well, and that doesn't count the ELOs that happen in the sophomore year or any of that.
That's the, we call them like the mini-projets, just to whet their appetite.
But you take the person out, you're up 20%.
Right.
And if we had the staff and capacity, Mr. Patrick, we would expand. Yeah. This isn't, this is, we're at kind of the edge of, we really need to have a conversation, Brian and I, about next year's staffing and budget and whatnot, because so many kids signed up to do this work. Oh, yeah, and it's makes sense. We don't want to tell kids no to this. Right? Right? Because it's applying what they're learning. The key is to, we just, this was a test run. I walked into the cafeteria one day and saw the hydroponics that they're going to show you when I was shopping. It was just so cool, it just appeared one day, and they had the goggles and the thing that moves. So you, like, you could ride a roller coaster and spin and...
Yeah, I was wondering if there's a weight limit on the...
Yeah, I didn't see that. I'm a tested, but I'm going to try. I'm a tested, Jim, I... My kid tried it one Sunday, we were here for something. Yeah, that's one. So Jonathan, are you, oh, yeah, let's hear from Jonathan.
All right. I'll be honest with you, the computer is playing some tricks on me, but yeah, let's hope it goes well. So, all right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jonathan Lee, and as mentioned, I am an exchange student from Malaysia. So that's near the equator, near the South China Sea, a whole another part of the world. I came here in January, and I met with the guidance counselor, and she suggested to me this class. And when I met Mr. Enright, and I can assure you, he's inspiring, a very incredible teacher, he came up to me and was like, "Let's melt plastics." And I was like, "Whoa, just, I can hear, let me settle down first." But after I considered the many aspects of it, I'm really glad that I undertook this project. I've gone through, I've said a little bit of the technical part of my project in the video, but just the monster, but I would call it my baby, because it's really, it's such a thing that's close to my heart. Oh, look at it. So, as again, plastics are melted in the black tank, and the films from it will pass through the tube and into a condensing pill. And it comes out as biofuel. Why is this so? It's because naphtha, which is a form of petroleum, is heavily used in the production of plastics. And so it would definitely make sense that it can be converted back into its original state of petrol. And it's stored in long-chain hydrocarbons, which is also a component of plastics. The reason this project is so close to my heart is because of all the benefits that it could bring about. So for example, last year, China cut the amount of plastics it is receiving from the United States. And this year, for Malaysia especially, they totally cut the plastic acceptance. So we need to find different ways to dispose of our plastics. And as energy sources are decreasing, especially natural gas, we need to also discover alternate sources of energy. And as energy sources are decreasing, especially natural gas, we need to also discover alternate sources of energy. And I thought this is a very good way to start. We, we aren't able to identify what is the product exactly yet, but just this morning, we have managed to conduct some tests. And it is very promising that it could be diesel, which I believe is a very exciting find to everyone. And just here are some of the, oh, my.
Technology's just not over here.
Yeah, there it is. So, that's a, that's how it looked on the day of the trial run. And that is also some of my pictures from our meeting with Professor Yi, who is from UNH. And I, and this is especially a huge pleasure to me to be able to meet him. I believe he's also one of the first few partnerships we have with UNH. And I've received news about future programs where research students from UNH would come here to mentor the projects here, while the students here could go to UNH and learn from the projects they're doing over there. So, I'm really excited about this potential partnership. And above there, you could see, there is one of the last drafts I had for, for how the system would look like. Initial concerns from the science teachers were that it would, the system wouldn't be safe, given the high temperature it has. But, after our trial run, the professor say it was, it was safe. Yeah, that's all I gave. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, I'm really glad about that. What I would like to say about this class is, coming from Malaysia, I didn't have this opportunity to, to be able to design my own project, and I'm really glad I'm able to do it here. I believe it's a very good learning opportunity for students who just want to have something extra in their CV while also learning beyond the textbooks. So, I, e- even if I leave in June, I really hope that this school will be able to carry on its classes and also, I think more importantly, retain Mr. Enright as a teacher, as he is incredible, I would say. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyway, I could have four minutes? We're not, my hour isn't up yet, is it?
If, if I'm just like, here is the sample we collected.
So, a couple of things that I wanted to just quickly touch on, um, is that, so while we aren't specifically able to identify what the breakdown of that, of, of the extracted oil is, it, uh, allows for continued ongoing work with UNH, who does have an analyzer, and they are going to be analyzing that for us. Um, the electronics project that Robert, uh, referred to is trying to take it from AC to DC. And so, we've got, uh, you know, some of the skills that he's developed in, in this project. He's a big fan of music from the eighties, and so he wanted to convert something that was originally this, although without the disc player, it had a record player on it. And, uh, so he converted, wanted to convert it to the boombox. That was the size he wanted. Kind of big, but that's, that's exactly what he wanted. So, he's using, uh, the woodshop, developing skills down to woodshop soldering skills, as you saw from the back of it. He had to solder the wires, uh, speaker wires together, et cetera. So, uh, that's been, um, you know, he's learning a lot from that. The hydroponics man was, uh, maybe designed, completely built by two students who, um, didn't, really weren't familiar with the shop at all. They had, um, you know, one of them had dropped their car off one time to have some work done, but hadn't really done anything in the shop before. It looks like the things are brown, but it take the light away. It's just the lighting, so.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, the idea is, as I alluded to, it's a nitrogen cycle where the fish produce waste in the form of ammonia. It comes through a pump that's in this corner, and that's the pump where the fish kinda got stuck. That fish, the second fish, we'll see it by the way. Uh, the water comes up, comes through here, diverges into a three ways, but they're designed, so they had to come up. But it's not a model where you start to say, "Okay, where's this go?" They had to find the parts, they researched the parts that they needed.
I think so.
And, uh, went from there. They ordered the seedlings and things that they wanted. So, what happens is the water comes up through the, uh, through the pipe. And when it comes out, the plants actually pull out the ammonia, so it's a natural filter, just like it would be in a sand lake. So, um, the water is ordinarily higher, but to get it from a classroom upstairs, it's a lot easier. But it doesn't, doesn't spill with the water level, so it would nearly happen. The water right now is about a half hour on, half hour off in cycles. Um, the extension of a project like this would be, you know, how to expand to other things. Um, first of all, second of all, they could do hydroponics, which would be without the fish. They could look to see what a better balance would be, you know, some of the things didn't do quite as well. So, what would the better balance of the chemical, uh, composition of the water be, you know, what could that look like? Um, other extensions would be making it self-sufficient, where they design and build a solar system, solar panel system, so that it could completely be self-sufficient, self-sustaining.
Are you trying to bring EPCO to our school?
Well, it's, it's, it's funny you say that, Mr. Embrose, because actually, Mr. Enright will be submitting paperwork for an overnight field trip next April, to take a group of students to EPCO to work with the engineers.
I forgot, I forgot a minute, but all the teachers wanted to go. Um, so, this is actually. So, this is actually a part of this. This is a, uh, a motion simulator. And it was, so the basic design was, uh, a set of plans that we purchased, but we had to make some modifications. And things like that. So, there was still a lot of design elements to it. It was started off as a basic part, also on wheels, which makes it a lot easier to move around. And the idea is that using a, um, using a drone that, uh, uh, that was donated to the school library for use, and we make a video outside of the school. There's a lot of different pieces to it. Um, but we make a video outside of the school. That's what this is, using the drone. We actually got very specific and very technical about what are the drone requirements. There's some, um, there are some regulations about it, you may need a special license. Couple of you are nodding your head, saying, "Yep, absolutely." You know what I'm talking about. So, um, but we looked into it, um, with Scott Gregson, the engineer for the SAU, uh, looked into it, and we can do it without having specific requirements. Students certainly can if they're interested in obtaining a drone or, you know, a, a remote license. And that could also be incorporated as part of our aviation program that'll be starting up in the fall. The idea is that this video, so right now, the video was very flat, drones, if you're familiar. Uh, if you go like this, the camera sort of says, "Whoa, it's turning, it's keep it straight, because we don't want this." But you can have that removed, you can do it without that, sort of, if you want the sport mode. And this will simulate how the drone is flying. But in addition, if you're just sitting in there watching it on a screen, you wouldn't get the full effect. And with this on, with the VR headset, you are fully immersed in that experience. And the reason you are fully immersed, it blocks all sort of peripheral vision. So, anything that's in the video that you are playing is going to be your reality. But in addition to that, this is gonna move into synchronization with the video. And as you are flying around, seeing more so as it's coming down along the grass, there's going to be a spray of fresh cut grass, sprayed at the person. So, you will smell fresh cut grass if you're flying on the grass. And then you come up and you go between, let's say, if there's a branch and a tree, sort of go this way, go this way, up through, down, barely make it, you come back around, come up by the baseball diamond, up over the pitcher's mound, spray a fresh, uh, dirt. Make this, believe it or not. And then, uh, you come back along the outside and you're going through the water, one sprinkler system, you're sprayed with water. So, it's a very immersive experience. Now, that takes a lot of graphics cards expertise, and so, one of our students worked with Scott Gregson, ordered you to put the whole system together. And that's what we, enhanced graphics cards, it's a desktop system, so that we can change out graphics cards or any of the other things as needed. So, the biggest question is like, can we go in it and that sort of thing? So, I'll show you that it can be. Now, it's obviously not an easy thing to get into at first, but those are all things that they're gonna have to sort of figure out.
This is about, they're trying to keep this in because everyone wants to.
So, you will be standing here like this, and this goes all around. It will be controlled, one of the, uh, components that the team are looking into is whether we use a stepper motor or, um, uh, pneumatic, um, and so, uh, once they figure that out, we finish the rest of it. But it'll be driven by a piston, um, this is our part, and another piston over here, controlled with argon or robust. And it will tell, you know, at what point does it move up, you know, down, to the left, or up into, or up into the right, or whatever, whatever direction you wanna go into. So, it's a lot of math involved in this, especially because it's like a coordinate plane with X, Y, and Z.
Is that Tristan Wesson, the, 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 the company?
Really?
I'll get you in touch with that.
Yeah, well, that'd be great. Wonderful, thank you. Um, it, it's, 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 any of those connections that we've been making with lots of things are, you know, that's all such. He's down in Marlin, that's good. That's exactly the person I wanted to talk to. So, this is Robert. I see you looking at the, uh, how this thing did it. Is that what you have?
Well, I'm wondering how, I can see how it goes that way, but I couldn't see it this way.
Another one up, yeah, another one up. So, some of the issues that we've had on trying to do this one is that at first, it was very saggy, still in the middle one, it didn't have three quarters. But we had to put in some, like, horse and gears to let it lean.
Oh, is that my, I wondered why you did that.
Yeah, so you, you probably saw when it was, it was saggy.
No, no, I just, but it's, it's supposed to be like, fill some water, raise it for my kids.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, the idea being things, I mean, it'll want, it'll have about thirty-five degrees of, uh, of, of range, you know, in, in either direction, up and down, if I just.
I just wanna take it upside and sit and do it.
And, uh, those are the, uh, you know. Yes, okay. And then Jonathan's just gonna, uh, put you showing the crystal that one could imagine. It was making.
The practical results, it should have a certain clear cutting protein. And so, this is a mixture of some. Yeah, it, as a, I mean, this is one of the benefits of the practice, uh, in terms of actually sitting in that, it's a, it's a, yeah. And you, you had a fair shot, those were some of one kind of thing now, but like, yeah. So, maybe it was just a little bit of a small, and I can tell you this is much larger.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I would say you very much.
So, I, I will tell you, board members, as you're taking your seat, we certainly weren't here to tell you, please help us keep this going. The plan was already to keep this going, and I know I alluded to the fact that we'll have about fifty students trying to take this class next year. Space is obviously our biggest hurdle to overcome, quite honestly, because the kids need to be able to work on their projects, and they need access to the shop, and they gotta be close to the shop, but they can't be in the shop because the shop has classes too, right? So, one of, one of the things, our, our plan right now, um, unless something changes, which I don't think it will, we actually have a storage room that's two doors down from here, that's right next to the shop, a very large storage room. And the only thing really that it needs to make that room into a classroom, well, one, we gotta empty it, we can't use it as storage. And two, we need to install a couple of windows, and otherwise, it's pretty much ready to go, and will actually act as a perfect staging area for kids to work. And we actually found one thousand five hundred locked storage devices in this school that can house everything that's in this particular storage room. So, it's not gonna cost us anything other than buying two windows in order to convert this space. If you're like, where did we find one thousand five hundred locked storage areas?
I wasn't gonna ask you right now, but that's what I'm wondering.
It's because Jonathan showed it, his entire life is actually on one device. He's not carrying around a bookbag full of books and jackets and, so we have one thousand five hundred lockers sitting here doing absolutely nothing but taking up space. So, we're gonna fill them and catalog a lot of our textbooks and novels in the lockers, so that as we need to access them, we'll know which lockers to go to to get them. And that will give us an entire classroom space that is empty with a cement floor, a lot of shelving. It's got sheet rock, it's got ceiling tiles, it's just needs a couple of windows.
So, Jim, Jim Baker, just so you know, that's probably coming to the facilities committee, because I kinda told Matt to.
I kinda got a rumor on that.
To get going on that, yeah.
So, and that's, but that's, but that gives you some context for it, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, I wanted to thank you again for, uh, the opportunity to speak to you. Um, in the time from the end of the school day, and I didn't check it until maybe about a half hour before the meeting started, so even, um, Brian Sax doesn't know about this, but one of the things, as I mentioned, it's all student-driven. One of the things that students wanted to do was rockets and, you know, launch model rockets. And I said, "Oh, the thing is that we have to do something rather than just launch them." So, we're gonna be making devices where we evaluate how this trigonometry. So, we're going to be this far away, and we figure out how high it is, and we have to use so, uh, so, right, yeah, so, in order to figure out, uh, what the height of this ro- of the rocket went. And in order to also further help us, the, um, the, uh, mechanical engineering students at UNH emailed me, um, and they're going to come for that, and they're going to help us. And they launch high-powered rockets, which go up to ten thousand feet. And they're gonna bring some of the materials that they've made in their, some of the, the engines that they've made in their, um, machine shop. And they're gonna bring some other cool stuff and everything and, and help us, um, launch these things.
Larry, would you like to offer to participate and show them?
He's, he's a rocketeer, by the way.
He makes rockets.
Tuesday, May seventh.
Gotcha. All right, we'll connect the two of you because Larry has wanted to involve the students in his rockets as well. So, that's a perfect connection. I didn't realize that you were doing that.
Yeah, it just, just sort of happened. I met them last week at the symposium, and they just emailed me about ten minutes before the meeting started.
Brian, can you do the connecting on that, please? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, can we get that?
Can we just say thank you?
Yeah.
How about a motion to move eight-one to the next on the agenda?
Don't move, second.
Any reason on the why? Because Vicky Partey has two parents who are from Effing, I believe, Vicky?
Not from Sanborn.
Are they from Sanborn? Okay.
Effing's already done the ELO.
Okay. And eight-one is a cooperative ice hockey with, uh, Effing. And Vicky Partey-Hue is our athletic director.
Anyway, I think, uh, Phyllis was kind enough to get the information out in your packets to you. The NHI double A offers the opportunity to do cooperative teams with towns in your area. For sports, you have to apply to do it. Uh, they, they have guidelines to go forward with that. We thought this was a great opportunity for us and for Effing to join together for ice hockey. Uh, we would have done this whether the warrant passed or not. It's not just because the warrant passed. So, I don't want you to think, "No, here the warrant passed, and here we are with something new." I, a lot of schools, uh, that are small, like Effing, which you're next door to, I think you realize, does not have the opportunity to offer every sport because of the size of the school and the number of kids in it. They wouldn't be able to, uh, house a full team to be able to participate. And of course, ice hockey, like, uh, is a very difficult sport. It's a skilled sport. The kids usually start playing when they're very young, boys and girls. So, they, um, have a few kids that are playing ice hockey and would like to play for a high school team to enhance their high school athletic, um, resume as they come through their high school. And we here at Sanborn have some room in our roster to be able to allow them to come on to the team. The rules of the state are that if you do a co-op, you have a no-cut policy. So, none of our kids would be displaced here at Sanborn. That would be anyone, one of our number one concerns anyway. I wouldn't bring kids in for another school to give them an opportunity and displace Sanborn kids because we want them to get the full benefit of anything we offer here at Sanborn. Uh, the other piece of it is, it's one-year agreements. So, if something doesn't go well in the first year, we can dissolve it after the first year. It takes the agreement of both school districts to do this. We follow the same guidelines as we do for any other sports. They follow the same eligibility, the same athletic behavioral rules, and all the guidelines that we would follow normally on our team. Sanborn would be the lead school in the co-op. Our coach would coach the team still. And I would take care of all the arranging of the games, schedule, the buses, the officials, as I do already for the team. The nice little carrot benefit for us is that we would take the number of kids that Effing's gonna have participate. Right now, it's three or four kids that we know of, and we will take the costs that the school district is now paying for out of the warrant, and we would divide that by the number of kids. that the school district is now paying for out of the warrant, and we would divide that by the number of kids on the team. And Effing School District would cut a check to Sanborn for that amount of money to replace, um, to add to the money that we're already financing. So that's nice. And then the kids would help, as our kids do on our team, fundraise for the ice time, as we have to continue to do. Because the district obviously isn't doing that, that was not in the warrant article, to cover ice time. So it's a nice win-win situation for everyone. We give an opportunity for a few kids from Effing to be able to play ice hockey. We get a little financial payback to the money that you're gonna be paying out, and we get to have a little more solid numbers on the team as far as having a few extra kids on the bench to be able to draw from during a game. We'd like to have twenty-two kids at least rostered, April. And we sometimes get a few injuries, so it's nice to have some spare parts there. And it's a win-win situation for everybody, it's a, it's a great thing, and I think the benefit too for our kids to be playing with some other kids on, uh, from another school, is a great opportunity to learn to play with other kids that are actually from another school and not here from our school. So it's a great social benefit too, as we move on. Pretty easy.
Basically, you're just asking for board approval to accept, uh.
We need, the state requires that both school boards sign off. Effing has signed off, I have given Pete the paperwork for someone from the board here to sign off. And then they, it has to go to the council, at the NHI double A council meeting in May, and they have the final approval. It's been approved by the Ice Hockey Committee, it's been approved by classification, and it has been, um, approved by the Effing School, School Board. Yeah.
Um, I just got a question about the paperwork.
Yeah.
Um, they're referring to a two-year period here, where then you reapply?
That's the state, right.
That's the state, okay.
But we can dissolve it after a year, you're not, you're not, you do not have to stay in it for two years. We're in a two-year cycle for classification, so that's why they mentioned a two-year period.
I was wondering if it was two different things.
That's, it is two different things. Because a lot of teen, uh, schools, when they co-op with another school, you have to take both populations and add them together for the two schools, and it usually changes your classification. Us adding Effing to our population does not change our classification, so it makes it tough when you're scheduling.
How many kids from Effing?
Three to, uh, three to four.
Is that a cap? I'm sorry, Jeanie, is that a cap? Is it a cap of three to four, or is there, as long as we have room, we could take more?
Well, we did a cer- we did the survey out, and as long as we have room, right? We would not displace any of our kids ever.
So if I've understood incorrectly, we get a net reduction in cost of the programs, we expand the, the team size, the ability of the team to, to field the team successfully, and we bring in students from another district that'll also be able to interact with our kids and get a chance to play hockey. So all those are correct?
You are, all the great points, great summary.
The other thing that it does is gives us more feelings to help us do fundraising.
Too, also, another. This is Mr. Homberg, he's our president of our Ice Hockey Booster Club, and this is Mr. Merritt, our head coach.
So you need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion and a signature would be awesome.
I'll second that.
Wait, yeah, what's the motion again?
Uh, to approve the, uh, proposal for application to the, um, NI. NIH.
NHI double A.
Okay.
I'll help you out, Jim.
Yeah, that.
You're always helping me.
All right.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's gonna be unanimous.
Very nice, thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Have I signed that yet? Oh, okay, all right, I'll, she'll make sure I sign it before I leave.
Go out to your house.
Yeah.
You need to sign, right, Vicky?
Yes, please.
You'll do it right now. You can just sign. What? It's all that I care, it's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna sign it without reading it, are you gonna visit me in jail?
He's gonna read it again, we'll get it to you tomorrow.
It's mine, I'll get it tomorrow, it's, I, one minute.
First week tomorrow.
Okay. How we doing, Adam?
My turn?
You're up.
All right. So the freshman class is currently working on fundraising ideas and getting ready for next year.
Hold on one second, ladies and gentlemen, we try to conduct some business, please, could you go on the hallway if you would, please? So we, 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 we really can't hear who's talking over there. Okay, you're up, freshman class, what?
So the freshman class is working on fundraising ideas and getting ready for next year. Uh, the sophomore class, the Pizza Fest is this Friday, May third, at six P M. at the high school. Um, the junior class is getting ready for prom on May eighteenth. Um, the senior class is getting ready for our senior cruise, the rest of our events, the rest of the year, graduation, and we are ordering our senior class shirts pretty soon. So for Earth Day, uh, we did an F L T. on Friday, April nineteenth, right before break. Uh, there's a couple of different activities, like cleaning a garden, picking up trash around campus, uh, fusing plastics into fabrics, reusing shirts and making them into shopping bags, and turning all the lights off during F L T. Uh, we also, we also did some raffle baskets, and that was a pretty big hit. So the tw- and the, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty elections are coming up. Um, the packs are being passed out on our, at our due back, Friday, May tenth, and the class council elections will be held at the end of May. Uh, student council elections will be held in early June, and then you guys get to meet my replacement. Very sad.
Any, any idea who that will be yet?
I, 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 I think a couple of people are running, which is like, the first in a while, so, should be pretty fun.
Great.
Both, both juniors.
What do we have to promise to get elected?
Secret.
That's a very good answer, young man. I can see he's been paying attention to Mr. Baker all year long. Sounds good.
Okay. How about a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, I, the, um, district reorganization is not on the agenda, I don't believe, so I wonder if we should suspend our normal rule, in case there's anyone that wants to address that? Because it's not on the agenda, it wouldn't be something that someone would.
Actually, actually, we don't wanna do that tonight, I don't want to.
That's what we were talking about earlier, we're gonna wait and chill.
Yeah, because we're having a, a public forum in two weeks for that purpose, so we didn't wanna.
Okay.
Um, we felt like that, that was a scheduled meeting for that specific purpose. Plus, people just received the entire four hundred and forty question at the Q. today, and until people have had a chance to read it, unlike Mr. Fitzpatrick, who read it this afternoon, thank you very much, um, a lot of folks haven't had a chance to read it yet, and so there may be redundant questions.
Fine, okay.
Okay.
Public comment?
Uh, a- 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 anybody over there get public comment? Oh, yeah, what do you got there?
Thanks. Hi, T M A Gluck from Newton, and, um, I just wanted to make a comment that was a follow-up comment on something mentioned earlier in the meeting, about the times of your subcommittee meetings. Um, and also the times of your school board meetings. I think, um, Mrs. Mahoney mentioned the availability to attend subcommittee meetings when they're in the middle of the afternoon is very difficult for any community member, unless you're retired, or, um, you know, work from home and you have that flexible schedule. So making those committee meetings in the evenings, so community members can attend. Um, and secondly, even the time of your school board meetings, um, they used to be a little bit later, and I understand not wanting to be here that late, but you seem to be really good about moving the meeting along, sticking to time limits, just being more sensitive to getting community members involved in the times of those meetings to be able to do that. That's all.
Daryl Gannon from Kingston, um, I saw that seminary discussion was on the agenda tonight, and I, I'm not sure if there was any, um, progress on that. It's been quite a while since, um, there was, we found out that it was gonna be put on hold and not being put on the warrant. Um, i- if there's negotiations, I understand that there's, those are things that you might not be able to bring out in public, but it would be really nice to have some kind of an update on where it is at this point. Um, something general would be appreciated. Um, the other thing I wanted to comment on was these presentations tonight, and the two teachers, and Mr. Stack, and everyone at the high school who's supported, um, these projects, they're just absolutely amazing. And, um, it's, it's so great to see kids getting their hands in on things and making things. There's such a joy in that, and I feel with our, um, movement towards doing things on screen that we've lost that, that joy of making and creating something with your hands and being able to be involved in that problem-solving process. It's such an enriching experience, so I hope that the school board will continue to support that.
Um, yeah, I can see where there'd be some confusion on committee reports. Um, the problem is that we set the agenda Thursday, and for example, this week, the policy committee's gonna be Monday. So you set the agenda Thursday, you don't even know if the policy committee's gonna have anything to report at the next meeting. So you've gotta have it on there so that you can report, but on the other hand, they may not have anything. So we just list all committees, and then when I sit down before the meeting tonight, I check if anybody has something to say. Um, so you can't say, oh, the policy's gonna have something to say, and we find out Monday, but the agenda's already been set. So, you know, you, it's a catch twenty-two, you know, either way. Um, I, I can see, I can see what you're saying, and I understand the confusion. I don't know, maybe we can figure out some way to, to do this, um, but I don't know how right now, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at it. Okay, any other? Okay, we've got some first and second reads.
Yeah, six-thirty, not too bad.
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, well, this is set for six-thirty, so I'm sorry.
So let me read a motion before we discuss these policies. I would move that we approve new policies, I K F C. and J F A B D dash R one. Repeal old policies, J E B dash E. and J H C B. Reaffirm policies, J I. and J I B. And approve as revised policies, J E B., J F A A., J F A B., J F A B B., J F A B B R., J F A A B D., J G., J I C A., J I C A dash R., which is first and second read.
I'll second that.
So, just starting at the top, seven point one, and going down the list, um, are there any comments or revisions you'd like to see, four, seven, one, I K F C.? Any discussion on that one? How about the next one, J E B., entrance age?
Yes, Ms. Mahoney?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, J E B. states, students entering kindergarten must be five years old before October one, or have begun kindergarten in another public school. Students who complete kindergarten in the Sanborn Regional Stu- School District or another public school will then be permitted to enter grade one. And I'm wondering why the emphasis on public school there? Would we restrict students who have completed pu- uh, private kindergarten? Or private, yeah, private kindergarten?
We, uh, I can answer that, yes, we would, because the standards at private kindergarten vary so greatly, and this is a standard policy that I've had in every district I've ever worked in, that, that if a student has started, uh, public, each district sometimes has different cutoff dates for the start date of kindergarten. And so if, if a student has attended a public school, um, prior to their fifth birthday, then typically the district would accept them, but if they have not, then we would accept them based on our standards of the next. There has to be a line somewhere for the principals to make these decisions, and so that's, that's a very standard industry, not industry, but educational practice rule. Everywhere I've been, it's the same. And by the way, it works fine, we haven't had a problem with it, so I don't wanna change anything if there's not a problem.
Does RSA one ninety-three have anything to say about private school transfers?
I, I didn't look that up, this is such a standard procedure that I just didn't even, I'd have to look and dig in there and find that. It's a great question, I just, I've never had it asked.
So, I guess, we would accept any student that's five years old?
Yep.
As of October one, no matter, regardless of.
Right, if they're for one September, and they turn five by October first, we would accept them.
But if they're not that age, and they have attended a, a private kindergarten, we would not find that acceptable.
That's right, we would not.
So these policies need to be updated for compliance with new regulations, and that's a great question. Um, I'd like to see us approve this revised policy for tonight, but I think we should do research on that issue of private school transfers.
I, that's up to the board, I certainly don't feel like we need to spend time on that, the policy's fine.
Right.
It works perfectly, we've never had a problem with it. If we have a problem with it in the future, we could discuss that, but you have to remember that there will always be a problem every time we draw a line, and this is one that we have to draw a line on. We have to draw a line on what age we accept students in the kindergarten, because the principals have to be able to follow the policy, which is their, the job of an administrator is to administer the budget and administer the policies, and if there's any gray in this, it would be very difficult for them.
So anything else on J E B.?
Question on that one, so, when I went through it, to the point of drawing lines, it does make a statement that, um, so long as, unless the person has attended another public school, as opposed to another public school at a kindergarten level, so that first grade would be the next progression. So it could be read that if I was in pre-k in another public school, I'd go directly in the first grade.
No, that, that wouldn't happen in practice, but that's a good, good question. What, what this is saying is that if a student attended another public school in pre-k at four years old and did not turn five by October first, they would go to pre-k in the, in our school. We, we get records from the, from the sending schools that tell us this information. Right, so this is, this isn't, this is a very standard practice, it's not a problem at all.
Okay, just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, yeah, yeah, these are all great questions.
J E B. dash E. entrance age, any comments for that one? Uh, J F A A. admission of new resident students. Uh, J F A B., there is a typo on that, particular update on page six. And Mr. Fitzpatrick caught it, um, he thinks we should have it read, uh, student's parents are divorced, and the student lives primarily out of district, the student may nonetheless attend schools within the district and be considered a resident of the district, so we're adding the word be in there.
That's fine.
On that. Um, anything else you'd like to change or discuss for that one?
There, there may be a time in the future when we do the next round of revision, when we're on a regular five-year cycle instead of trying to do three hundred or four hundred in one year.
Right.
And I mean that sincerely, that, that we might wanna have a conversation about what I call the pillow rule. I've worked in districts where the policy actually says, the student's head must hit the pillow the majority of the days of their life in the district. This does not do that, and I'm okay with that, because we really generally don't have a problem with it. But in, in districts that are, have improved their academic performance, and people wanna come here, as I expect we will. My intention is that this may be a problem in the future, but again, like the other policy, it's not a problem right now, we don't need to shake it up or anything, but I just want everyone to know that I am a stickler for residency. The tax dollars of the community should not be spent to educate a student who doesn't live here. I have a real problem with that, and we've had a couple of sticky ones, but the policy has been okay so far, so I'm all right with it. But I just wanted you all to be aware of that, I like the, the majority of the time where your head hits the pillow rule more than who lives where.
So J F A B B. foreign exchange students updated, and we've modified the language a bit, but not significantly. Mr. Fitzpatrick wants to know, if under statement of purpose, it should read, the board may admit foreign exchange students in the statement of purpose. Instead of, you know, since below it indicates may for.
That, that's perfectly fine. I mean, certainly, we reserve the right to, to refuse, but. Yeah, I would think. Typically do not, right, and we're happy to have you here.
I will keep that one. And J F A B B. dash R. admission of foreign exchange students.
I just had a question for clarification on that one, Tom, that was my question of, I was concerned about twenty-one-year-olds being in the high school and having the potential of, uh, access to alcohol.
Yeah.
Being spread around, and their, their comment back was that the, uh, New Hampshire's Required Free Education requires that, but it's, this is specific to foreign exchange students, but don't we have?
I think that it applies to both by law. Jody researched that and provided the answer. So her answer was essentially that we, we can't change it, that it has to say twenty-one.
Yeah, but logically, that doesn't make sense. If you, if you can deny any student playing foreign exchange from coming in, I don't know how you can say, but, but you're under, but up, up to twenty-one, you have to let them in. You can deny them regardless of age.
Right, I mean, certainly, I, I think it's just important to recognize that. I think Jody was going for congruency between the, the, the statute of the age. This isn't a problem. We don't have twenty-one-year-old foreign exchange students. We don't have any twenty-one-year-old students. But certainly, if there was a, a situation that, that came up, the ability to approve or deny would apply. So.
Okay.
Jamie, Jamie sent us a bunch of questions ahead of time, just so everyone knows. And I tried to, it was great, thank you. That really helped me to prepare the.
Second thought, last time I didn't do that.
No, thank you, Jamie, appreciate it.
So that would look pretty good to me. JFABD, admission of homeless students. And Mr. Fitzpatrick would like to add to the statement of purpose. Special attention will be given to ensuring the enrollment and attendance of homeless students, comma, in the SRSD, comma, not currently attending school. And that's a reference to them being in the area or in our communities.
The way I interpreted the way it was written without that in there would be, anybody in any surrounding community, going back to the residency thing, would be able to say, oh, no, no, I want to come here now.
It is absolutely true. And it has been a legal fight for me since the moment I walked through the door. And Jody's comment on this is that it's directly from the federal McKenney-Vento laws, the, the, the statement. And we cannot modify that. We cannot stop enrollment based on medical documentation, birth. It is really, I have had four different cases that I've had to appeal to the state, fight with them about whether or not the student lived in the district, and I won three. It is tough, really tough. One of them, I actually, well, let's just say, there's some folks at the state that now have gotten to know me quite well. And it was challenging.
Would it help your arguments if you could refer back to, say, as following the policy with SRSD?
Because if the policy's incongruent with federal law, then the law trumps the policy. And what Jody said is that the, the documentation is directly from the law. It's a great, great question, and I, so the answer is yes, it would help me. But no, it wouldn't, because it just would be get overridden by, your, your suggestion is awesome, I'd love to do it, I'd sign me up. I'd like it to say, if your head doesn't hit the pillow in town, doesn't matter, you can't go to school here, but it just doesn't work that way. It gets so bad that we have to provide transportation halfway to other districts.
Well, I would some of my other questions.
Yeah, and that's, you can't change that, it's, there's nothing we can do. It's just federal law. It's insane.
Mr. Fitzpatrick needs to run for Congress.
Yeah, if you do, you let me know, because I'll give you some stuff to change.
So that one apparently has revisions that really can't be modified since their regulatory.
I, I think Jamie has a great eye for what's federal law, because every time he asks a question, it's about the specific federal language, which is great, because it doesn't really always make sense for the way we have to, what would make sense in the world. There are a lot of protections under five oh four, IEPs and homeless that we can't do anything about.
And for the rest of these, I didn't see anything significant that needed discussing, but does anyone have any comments on the rest of these policies? We also have JICA dash R, which goes with JICA. It's in your packet, but I didn't put it on our list. So that was part of my motion, just so you know. I'd forgotten to add that to the, the agenda.
Can you explain what that is, PM?
JICA dash R, student dress. It's rules for student dress on, on campus.
Now, I, I would like to just say for the record that Mr. Fitzpatrick asked a really great question. Has the district ever considered a dress code? And the answer is no. And, and I didn't want, I did ask Mr. Stack, and he shared with me that in his twelve years here, that's never been discussed. The, the problem with dress codes for our future is that there have been court cases that have upheld students' rights in public schools to wear clothing that expresses themselves that was very controversial. And those are Supreme Court cases. I think that our, I feel bad saying this, but our country has passed a point where dress, a mandatory dress code has probably passed its life. Right? Private schools can do it because you tuition in. But it's a public organization, and the public has rights, and those rights have been tested in the Supreme Court.
I would just say the, the precedents in the Supreme Court are about schools that don't have dress codes. And if it's an open dress code, therefore you cannot tell somebody it's an open dress code, that they're outside of the dress code. If there is a, a uniform policy, then the Supreme Court has not ruled that somehow.
Right, but I want to be clear that, that I don't want to be the case test for that.
I, I, I understand that.
Supporting you. I'm just saying that I understand your perspective, but I, I don't want to be the guy who's going to report over this. Yeah, yeah.
If it's any, if it's any help to you. I have taught probably five McDonald's, about ten, twelve Britney Spears, any number of Goths.
I was wondering.
Show how old you are. You know, there was one time actually that they had their pants on backwards. Anybody remember that one a few years ago? So, you know, i- i- it comes and it goes. And it, you know, we have a saying, kids don't change, but the names do.
So with the exception of the typos I found, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much.
Just a quick note of thanks to Bob Dawson for his incredible hard work on the J policies.
Yeah.
He has worked very hard on the J policies.
I, I have something on the new business very quickly. We ran into this problem a couple of weeks ago when we were finished and there was a start time for, when we were discussing the, the school reconfiguration. And we had to kill some time. And that was because we had times printed on the agenda. We ran into the same problem with the budget committee. We changed the process in the, the town budget committee, sorry. We changed the process a little bit over there, and we were finished. But because you have a time, for example, looks like we're going to be out of here perhaps a little quicker. Public comment, second public comment is eight thirty. I don't think it's going to happen, but somebody could walk in at eight thirty, and we've already gone home and said, well, wait a minute, your agenda's got eight thirty. I came here and I want to talk about something. So there's two ways to do this that I know of. One is a way that I'm not quite sure, and that is to put down on the top, times are approximate.
Does that?
Well, but I want to make sure you are on, you're, you're on board with that. The other is not to put a time, which is what the budget committee in the town, that's why I want to bring up this approximate time thing, budget committee in the, in the town did. This is the first on the agenda, second on the agenda, third on the agenda, with no start times. So I just want to throw that out to you. I don't think we have to get involved in it, but I wanted the board to look at it and say, you like to, I mean, Phyllis and I just kind of did this the other day, right? To just put, you know, approximate start times just for tonight's meeting. But would you prefer just not have times on it at all? I don't care.
Well, one thing that we've done, we've had, that I can think of right now, we've had two times that we've had to stop the meeting from the wait.
Right.
Because we were ahead of schedule. This is wasting everybody's time.
That's why I want to bring it up.
I think the time should go away with the understanding that we will try to keep up with everybody to try and get as many people in. We'll set the schedule so that the important stuff will be later and get the, uh, the dane stuff out.
Maximize the, the, the.
Maximize the time upfront.
Right, but also maximize the attendance, you know?
That's right. I think that would be better.
I, I just said she was first, go ahead.
Did you say you, you are in favor of removing the times from the agenda?
Removing the times.
I, I, I don't have a problem with the times. I just wanted to point out that the two times that we, the two examples that you mentioned were unusual. They were, they were unusual. They were public forums that we had published specifically.
This is why.
We wanted the public to come to those forums and, or, and they were presentations, really, I guess they weren't really forums.
Right, but see.
So that's, that's unusual. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add, I advocated that we stop the meetings in those two examples, but I wouldn't expect that we always would do that.
No, but for example, if we finish by eight o'clock tonight, somebody could come in and say, you said second public comment at eight thirty. I wanted to comment on something on the agenda, but you guys had gone home.
But we're not going to have that problem.
No, I, I, I didn't expect to go even this deep into the conversation. I just throw it out there, what do you guys want to do? I, I mean, we can, whatever you want. Well, Jamie, I can't stand that first, I'm going to go with Jamie here. Okay, he's giving it to you.
I think, I, I don't think we really lose anything by not putting the times on there. But if we do a, an evening, a meeting where we are asking the public to come, I think we should publish a time for that portion.
Yes, that's, thank you.
Sure.
There should be time certain for those. Can I, can I just throw in quickly?
And then again, it's, it's going to be approximate. And we can move things around, we'll try to hit it.
That's okay. Hold on one second.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, I cut Jamie off because I didn't recognize Sammy for it.
Oh, I thought.
What you got there, Jamie?
I was going to basically say the same thing that Jim had said. We should go with time certain for, well, particularly this whole reorganization discussion that we're working for the integrated community.
Yes, yes.
We should wait for them to be there for when we said we were going to talk about it.
So, so what, what my, I want to go back to what Ms. Gluck said when she spoke earlier, which is that what, what we've tried to do and what I would like to continue to do is to put, there are some parts of the board business that are just brief, quick updates, like committee updates, pledge of allegiance, getting the meeting started. We always schedule things that are bigger for the public after six thirty, right? Always. So we, we heard that feedback early on, so we've tried to really do that for them. And then the other piece is that I would agree with all of you that for me to publish and publicize an important event and get people to attend, like offering childcare, I would just ask that the big ones that are kind of special events start at a specific time and we don't change it. Okay. Because then the parents know, like next Wednesday, two Wednesdays from now, we have a major event that starts at six forty-five. I'm going to have the childcare start at six thirty, so folks can show in. I'll put all that out there. I've already put it out there that we're having childcare. And I think that the childcare has made a big difference. And it's not very, the, the Key Club does it for us. They're really wonderful. We tried to pay the teacher, and she's like, no, I get a stipend for Key Club. She wouldn't even accept it. So maybe we could do a little gift card for her or something, but it's been a huge.
Drop your kids off and then go to Kingston House of Pizza instead of coming to the meeting?
I'm not going to micromanage the daycare, but that could theoretically happen, Jim. That's a good point, but no.
That meeting is starting, the childcare is starting at quarter of six.
Great.
It takes anyone else to come to the board.
So we actually, we did, thank you, Phyllis. Yeah, we did, we did actually even start that one that early. But I think it's important for that, that parents, that if, if we, what could be flexible is what we move in front of the start time of that. So let's say that we get through all the committee reports, everything's done at six twenty, we've got twenty-five minutes, let's move something from the back. Even if we did a non-public.
Right.
And just got that done, just don't waste the twenty minutes.
There won't be time, there won't be time. So as I understand it, there'll be no times except for the important things on the agenda. And even after the important things agenda, no time, so we can move them forward. Makes sense?
We're taking the times off the agenda, is that what you're saying?
Except for big stuff.
Except for the big stuff. You know, so that way, if we have twenty-five minutes to kill, we can take stuff from behind and move it forward.
Well, I, I just, yeah, I mean, we moved those students ahead tonight. What if somebody was planning to be here at six forty-five or six fifty to see the kids, and they missed half of it?
Well, that's why I went by the motion, because we can do that by motion.
Exactly, no, I know, but if we, there's no time on that.
And I also didn't want two students to still be here now.
No, and I agree.
You know.
I agree, we did the right thing tonight.
Oh, fuck, wait, put that in the minutes? I think that's the first time he said I did the right thing. Okay.
I'm going to watch that replay and see what just happened later.
Second public comment.
Hi, Annie Collier, Newton. I had three areas I wanted to comment on. One is this whole discussion of the times and stuff. Whether you put time limits on there or not, having attended many board meetings for many, many years, I can tell you that I respect so much how you are efficient, you're on target, you stay on point, you accomplish the work, the tremendous amount of work that you do, within a timely fashion. I've been to some meetings which used to go till almost midnight or later and didn't accomplish any more than you do. So I wanted to give you guys a kudo on that. I think having the estimated timeframe on there is kind of helpful, but, you know, whatever you decide to do. The second thing that I wanted to comment on was the dress code discussion. I remember a few years ago, there was a discussion about a child who got sent home because her shorts were considered too short, because the dress code was that they had to go below her fingertips. So I'm astonished that there's a discussion saying there isn't a dress code. And she came in and made a presentation with her mom, showing pictures of current fashions and how there weren't any shorts that were available for girls that were lower than that. And she happened to have long arms. So it was just, she missed an honors class being sent home. So I think that revisiting that dress code and whether there is or isn't one would be really important. And I'm glad that there isn't one, I don't know when it went away.
Well, no, there is a, I just, I'm going to pause for a second. There is a dress code.
Okay.
What Jamie's question was, do, could we have school uniforms?
Oh, okay.
Which is very different. I just wanted to clarify, because there is a dress code.
Okay, well, I do feel that, I don't know if that dress code that sent that girl home has ever been revisited, but I would suggest that it's something to be looked at, whether it's by the school or the administration or by the school board. But it's something that I never recall coming up again after that appeal was made by that student and her mom. And then the third thing that I wanted to comment on, if I can remember what it was, I think I've lost it. Never mind, I don't have another comment, because I can't remember what it was going to be. Hi, Tammy Gluck from Newton again. And I, I just wanted to make a recommendation for maybe some new board members as well as maybe our budget committee liaison from the school board to check out a series of reports that have just been put out about how a state decides on the value of public education, about adequate education in New Hampshire. It's a series of about, I think, six different stories reported on NHPR. There's a lot, I don't know if you guys are following, there's a lot going on at the state level with education funding. And I can share the link with the superintendent and it's their podcasts that it just might be some great reference information for all of you to check out. That's all.
No, you had your chance.
I know, but I remembered.
You just remembered. Go ahead.
I just thought it was really, Annie Collier, Newton. I wanted to say how thrilled I was to find the creativity and the solutions orientation that was done with finding fifteen hundred storage lockers so that the kids could have space to be able to pursue more of that. And I appreciate that very creative, outside the, you know, the little restrictions thinking. So I wanted to give, I wanted to give an accolade on that.
Right, isn't it really kind of inside the small box instead of outside of the box?
Yeah, kind of outside, around, circles.
We're kind of running a loose meeting here, aren't we?
Sorry, I was.
Hexagrams.
Okay. Next agenda. Phyllis, what I have is subcommittee meetings, dates and times. I think each subcommittee might want to look at when you're meeting and times and stuff, and maybe get back to us. I know the policy people will be doing that. It's going to be up to the subcommittee. Usually the chair sets those times, but we'll talk about that maybe Monday.
Can I just say that, that, just so everybody knew that, well, I'm going to anyway? Because I actually went through all of the, I was planning to do this today and couldn't get to it. But I went through all the meetings for the rest of the year, assigned the people who go there, double-checked who was in, made sure there were no conflicts, and were set for the rest of the year on our standard schedule after school hours. It's all set. If anyone has a problem, just email me. You should be good. I just, I just took what we normally do and set it straight. I think that's just the easiest way to do it. We have a habit, we have a procedure, but if anyone wants to change it, I'm happy to help.
Okay, the.
Question?
No.
So you're going to send that, that schedule to us?
Already sent to you.
Okay.
And your responses are to be sent back to him from you.
Yeah, it's automatic, thanks, Tom. I set up this thing where when I email you, it just says, thanks, Tom.
Can you remember a couple of years ago? We liked this a couple of years ago. They were killing each other, I was bringing in a flak jacket.
It types two letters and fills out the sentence for you.
Twelve o'clock, we were still here and I had on our vests. Okay, bulletproof ones. Okay, here we go. The next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, from six to nine PM with the public. With the public forum beginning at six forty-five in the auditorium. At the Sanborn Regional High School. Now. My question is, do we wanna meet here until six forty? Well, how's the acoustics in there without many people?
Where, what I, what I was going to propose or plan, what I had planned to set up is. We're either going to get a huge showing or a very small showing, depending on how people receive the F A Q document that went out this week. And I'm anticipating a big showing, so what, what I was planning to do was to. Have the board not be way up on the stage in those super bright lights, but have them actually be in front of the stage. Because you can, well, the thing is.
Can you still house a view?
It's fine. You can see people just fine, and they still have to come to the podium, so it's, it's angled, the chairs are angled, and it. I'm going to ask people not to sit in the back and up in the balcony. I'm gonna ask them to sit up front as a community. And sit together and have this conversation. So we're actually going to limit the seating from being, you know, such a smattering of people, because we want everyone to come together and talk.
Okay. My, my concern is the auditor, I mean, the cafeteria, the acoustics were terrible.
That was awful.
And, and that's okay. That's, that's okay. We knew that going in.
Yeah.
But my concern is that the auditorium, the acoustics. Unless there's a lot of people in there, may not, so what I'm saying is, do you wanna meet here for the first half of the meeting? And, um, and then go in there, because if there's no one in there while the school board meeting's going on, other than that. On the other hand, we're close enough. I'm just throwing this out to you. And I, I think there's someone, I'm not sure, but I think there's someone who wants to be recognized.
I just, I was just gonna point out that when we had our previous forum. In the auditorium, the configuration that Mr. Ambrose mentioned is what we used. We weren't up on the stage, we were down front, and I think. Except for a remote, we had a difficulty with remote, the remote. Acoustics from that, but otherwise I thought it was fine.
So maybe my concern is not worth.
Well, the only.
A concern.
We can't move everything in here around over to there and go back.
Well, I'm just seeing, okay.
We, like, it's too complicated.
I just want, like, it's better to throw it out there and talk about it.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah.
What do you guys?
I just want a reminder that, uh, as I mentioned my inaugural meeting, I do have a vacation planned for the fifteenth. I won't be there, so I will have to pick that up on the video.
Yeah, so you just don't want your shot at that. Okay, no, that, that's fine. All right, so.
We can FaceTime you if you'd like to, you know, on the deck of the boat or whatever.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Jamie's got a big one. Okay. Do we have them on public?
We do.
Okay. So, um, we will now, um. Nick can make a motion, Larry?
I move that we go into non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two. C and D.
Second.
Jamie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that's unanimous by roll call, though. Not roll call, but voice call.